Away now, although I should notice note at the beginning that Mary will be joining us after she swears and two members of the fire department in Yarmouth. So I don't know what that means time wise. So, welcome to the September 26 Harwich Planning Board meeting. My name is Duncan Berry. I'm the chair. This meeting is being held in person and I need to request according to Mass Law that anyone who intends to record this meeting must first notify the chair, who will then inform the other attendees. Is anybody intended to record this? No, very good. So I'd like to ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, calling this meeting to order, we begin to this evening with case number PB 2023-20, which was continued from June 27th, July 11th, July 25th, August 22nd, and September 12th. Main Street Stone Horse LLC through its agent Attorney William Riley is seeking a modification of the slight planned special permit PB 20-2019-13 in order to reduce patios and walkways and increase parking. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-55, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9. Properties located at 878 Route 28, assessors map 25 parcel A2. Properties located in the commercial high-density CH-1 zoning district. Good evening, Mr. Riley.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Berry. The, so, working with my client sometimes is like dental work. I'm always pulling teeth, but the-
Remember, this is being broadcast.
You know, sometimes the truth hurts, like a tooth pull. Anyway, so the, we've made quite a bit of progress. We've been to the site.
Yep.
We finally got revised planting plan, which we just distributed now, so I apologize for that. It was delivered to my office at five past five tonight. So, the, and just to run through it very, very briefly, over in the right-hand corner, there's a couple of yellow spots, proposed Leland's. That was a result of conversation with that neighbor, Kent Rochella, who represents those neighbors.
Yep.
And he has indicated he's satisfied with, with that change. The ramp that the chairman had requested down from the patio to the dumpster has been completed. I don't know if you've been over there, but the handrails are up.
Great.
And it looks, I think it looks very good. I was told that the, the walls around the dumpster enclosure was supposed to be installed today and the dumpster moved back to that location. The hardwired lights are in. What the, what the planting plan shows is foundation plantings, front and rear, for both the north and south buildings. We're also proposing between the two buildings, a thornless honey locust tree, which I'm told will grow to be 25 or 30 feet high. In the front of the south building, we're proposing a Norwegian spruce. And the little green squiggles there between the Norwegian spruce and the driveway are going to be planted to prevent people from parking on the lawn. Right now, we, that's from very thin, like stakes to keep, the kind you use to keep a snowplow from going on your lawn. But we're gonna get that squared away. The, and then we had our, the punch list items. We talked about the staircase over, leading from the patio to the east side of the parking lot. And I'd recommend it to the client that we simply remove the stairs rather than try to rebuild them.
Right.
Because the main avenue of foot traffic into the parking area is really going to be down the ramp or down the existing stairs closer to the, of the north building. So I'm gonna need your recommendation on that. The, see, lighting's done, paving's done. So, so one of the other questions that's remaining has to do with sprinklering the office building.
Right.
It's been, we're no longer using it as a dormitory. We only, the only people living there are the onsite manager. So that, need a decision from you regarding that. I've had discussions with my client about getting estimates to complete all the work so we can post a bond and perhaps get a final vote, which would probably be, make you guys at least as happy as it would make me.
Yep.
The, I mean, that's about it. I'm happy to keep talking, but I think that's what we've got tonight.
Do I have it right that we're basically looking at staircase and sprinkler issues and that's pretty much it?
Pretty much it.
Okay. So, Harry, I know that you've been speaking about the staircase before. Did you want to bring that again?
No, I, I realized that, you know, at one point in one meeting, I asked to see the, the plan and I was shown a site plan, but in my experience on this board, every time there has been a, a motion, there is a narrative that goes along with it. And I've never seen that narrative. So at, in 2019, when the, the, the application was, was placed for this modi, or for the original modifications to the property, I'm sure there was a document that has the narrative and I've, I've never seen that. So, I did see, when I, when I asked to see it, there was a, that, there was a smaller eight and a half by 11 version of a site plan and I was told that that was it. But, looking back at it, I, I have to believe there was a bunch of text that went along with that when it was approved, when the, when the board voted on it. And I've, if that doesn't exist, then I'm, I'm satisfied that I've seen what there is. But it just seems weird that every time we have a motion in front of the board, Mary writes down a whole bunch of stuff with a lot of detail in it. And, and unless that's a new practice since 2019, when this was originally, this originally came in front of this board, then I have to believe that that document exists somewhere and I've, I've never seen it.
Yeah, it's case 2019-13 and I'm sure we've, it looks like Sheila's looking for it right now.
It's part of the original-
Application.
Application.
The May application on this.
Okay.
Yeah, we did provide another narrative, right?
It said Attorney Riley provided both.
Right.
And I had to mark on each which one was from another year, the other year, and which one, I had to mark those because they seemed to look the same.
Right.
So I did hand those out in the beginning and I can find something if you'd like to-
I'm just, my, my point is that I don't know that I have enough information to be able to, because of the four-year distance between when the first application or the, the application came before the board and I, I've been pretty well aware of what has happened here in the past nine months or ever, when we started dealing with this. But what happened before that, I don't feel like I have enough information to be able to make a, an informed decision as to where we are now. So, and, and that's, it, it may have come my way and I might have just overlooked it.
Underneath your site plan, you worked memo, no, underneath that, no, it's a memo, it's a staff memo. There it is.
Which one?
It has all the information.
Yeah.
I just finished, just finished this today.
Very thorough. You did a great job.
And some-
The orig-
So I think what we ought to do is, because I think we're probably not going to resolve everything, we're probably going to do a continuance, I'm guessing.
That's correct.
All right. So why don't we distribute that original just so we can kind of triangulate, even if it's on Dropbox?
For the next meeting.
For the next meeting. Because that will solve some problem, that will also help us finalize, you see the drift, you know, as we triangulate between-
Yeah.
-pre-COVID, COVID, and post-COVID kind of exigencies on what was going on the site, the different building inspectors, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, we want to appreciate and understand where you're coming from with that.
Well, just, the, the principal changes-
Right.
Are the number of patios-
Right.
The number of parking spaces.
Right.
And really, candidly, that's about it. You know, the, the, you know, we're in the process of rebuilding all the handicap ramps.
Right.
Because the-
The railings.
Oh, I guess somebody drove through one of them.
Oh, jeez.
So, I drove by today to take a look and there's, there's an area, it's the, if you look on this plan, the north building on the right-hand side, there's a, there's a handicap ramp that goes down around. And because it's, you know, there's a three-foot or four-foot drop to the bottom of the ramp, some guy apparently drove a car through it. So-
Guys, you have cameras? Do you have cameras?
No.
Oh, yeah.
But apparently, because the, the maintenance guy was talking to was surprised I hadn't heard about it. And, and so I said, all they have is yellow tape up, like a police line. I said, no, you gotta put, you know, something-
Physical barrier.
So that people don't walk over that thing. So they were going to put up sawhorses and things to keep it out. The parts have been ordered to replace the ruined fence.
Right.
But, you know, but, but basically, you know, the principal aspect of this, of course, were the buildings and the planting plan. The planting plan has changed somewhat. The, sitting here today, I really couldn't tell you without the original planting plan in front of me, but not significantly. So, I hope that, once everybody understands that, you know, the, the project, really, although it's been difficult getting full compliance with all the aspects of the special permit, that the, basically, the, the, the project hasn't changed dramatically.
Right.
So, and I'll get, I'll have estimates before our next meeting to complete all the work and hopefully we can close it out at that point.
Okay. Anne?
And just looking at Jack Mee's response, is-
I haven't seen his response, so I don't know.
So this is from the 21st.
Yep.
Emails from the 21st. Part of this is also a requirement that we have a completed as-built, correct?
Right.
Right. And I talked, when the engineer dropped us off today-
Yeah.
He told me that-
Because it's supposed to say work in progress, yeah.
Well, he told me that he expects to have the as-built. Classic engineer, he said, I can't do an as-built until we're finished. So, so, but-
But that seems, that seems to be part of the holdup here.
That's right. That's what, he needs that. The other thing is, like, I don't know what our, you know, we'll come to terms with the stairs issue, the sprinklers, I, you know, right. If it's not, I mean, to me, that's a straightforward zoning issue. If it's not being used as a dorm, then we won't have any objection to that, I don't believe. I mean, do we? I know, Craig, you had a question?
I just wonder if it would be helpful, it'd be helpful for me, if, for anybody else, if, if we go through this punch list. I'm not sure, I think maybe Attorney Riley put that together.
Actually, it was put together by Terry Eldridge, our engineer, but yeah.
Right.
Topic, actions to be taken.
Right.
So if that makes sense, because I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, why don't you go with, start off with the questions.
All right. Fix, fix the steps. You indicated-
Yep.
That we need further discussion on that, the board, to see if that's acceptable to us.
Yep.
Improve the railings, that's indicated that that's ongoing.
Right.
Correct. Do you have any suggested estimated completion date?
All I know is the, the things to do, the work have been ordered, so.
Is that going to be done by a separate contractor or by the maintenance people?
I think it's going to be done by the maintenance people that work for Mr. Rudnick.
I, I would find it helpful if we could set a date on there, much as you've done-
Yeah, okay.
-for the others. Finish the handicap ra, handicap, handicap ramp. No, later than, end of next week. I was down there this afternoon and it looks like the ramp to the dumpster is completed and the dumps, the old enclosure that had been taken down to pave is now, is there.
Oh, they put it back up? Good, yeah.
Yeah. I was there about five o'clock. The dumpster's still on the other side of the parking lot, but I think that's just-
I was told they had to put the walls up before they could move the dumpster over.
Yeah. The landscape plan, we've talked about that. It was going to be arriving the week of 9/18, but obviously, as you said, we just, you got it.
We have it in, in the-
The planting, again, goes with the landscape architecture. The lighting, the walkway lights, the electric versus the solar have all been installed. I thought that looked great.
It did, yeah.
Down there, a lot more, a lot brighter. They look sharp, so.
Yeah, no, they do. That's correct.
Glad to see that completed. The pavement, as you indicated, that looks like it's all done. I don't know about the manhole cover.
Yeah, that's been, that's been completed as well.
Okay. The screening and the fencing plan, you explained about the two Leland Cypress trees, but then is also the stockade fence. And it says the stockade fencing has been installed. Was, I, when I was down there, I didn't see any new stockade fencing at all. And I didn't even see where it might go. I'm looking on the landscape. There's an existing stockade fence.
No, I know. And the, I think the, the, if you look at that, as that property line continues from where it says existing stockade fence-
Right.
On the angle there, I think it's supposed to go from that property line, the dash property line that comes in, down to the road.
Oh, okay. And so that, there's nothing there.
Right.
Even though it says it's already been installed.
Well, yeah. The, I'd assume that they would be installing that this week, but-
I didn't see anything, I didn't see any that indicated they were digging post holes or, or anything at all.
No, no, I understand that. And the, the, you know, that's why I, I say, I want to get estimates to complete all the work.
Right. If, if we could also put a date, expected date of completion on that would be helpful. The sprinkler plan we talked about, as long as it's not used as a dormitory and continues that way, I think we're, we're fine. And the as-built plan we talked about, we have to wait on that.
With one, may I make one observation there? The idea of this being aerial photography?
I know. I talked with, yeah, we already had a, we did, I did have that response from Jack Mee.
Okay, good.
And I passed that along to Terry Eldridge and he said, you know, we won't use, you know, it won't be aerial photography.
Right. Okay, good.
And then the maintenance schedule? I don't, I don't think we received a maintenance schedule or-
Well, I have to, I have to tell you, you know-
I'm sorry?
Honestly, I honestly don't know what you mean when you say maintenance schedule.
Well, we talked about-
Like walk the property, you know, are there any damage to X, any damage to Y? Are the plantings failing? Just like monitoring the, the, kind of a checklist. If people aren't intuitively managing it as a manager is trained to do, then they need to be, you know, given a kind of a flow chart of, or an org chart-
All right, well that's-
What to do and who to go to.
Well, that description is very helpful. I'll be able to create something based on that description.
Well, you know what I mean? I mean, it's like, it's like I got on a clipboard, it's by the door, it's like, oh, today means we haven't checked, we haven't had our septic inspection and so that's three months from tomorrow or whatever, you know?
Okay.
I mean, and I'm assuming that that's not, like, over and above the call of duty for the person located there-
I don't think-
Unless that's, unless there's something that would be duplicated by a larger, you know, multi-property manager who's then could delegate these things.
He's got, there are two gentlemen who do maintenance work.
Right.
And the, the, and so it's a question for me to have him designate one and then I'll, I'll create the schedule for him, talking with him.
Right.
How do you want to do this? And then we'll be able to create it and have it before the next meeting.
Okay, great.
I think, you know, to piggyback on what Duncan said, as far as the maintenance schedule, like I think you checked the septic in three months or something like that. So those, those kind of major milestones that have to be done on an annual or quarterly or something basis, but almost, I don't want to simplify it, but one, I would think one of the responsibilities of the manager of the property, I walk the property once a day and I know-
Right.
The railing was broken, I need to get that repaired, you know? Somebody's parking on the grass, I need to get their light, assuming the manager has license plates for the people that are authorized to park there. So the type of things, I don't feel that I should be or we should be spelling out every single thing that the manager and maintenance are expected to do. I would trust that the owner's going to do that or will do that. But I think because of where we've been the four years we've come and the back and forth and things change so much, different stories, it would be helpful, I think, for everybody, for-
Yeah, no, I agree.
Mr. Rudnick and the maintenance people and the manager of the property to know what's our expectations on an ongoing basis-
Right.
And theirs.
Yeah, no, that's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
So, and the final thing that I just wanted to bring up too was the item here, of course, I just clipped it away right when I was supposed to be looking at it. So the temporary certificate of occupancy, I'm taking that you saw that the, it expired on the 15th of this month, right?
That's correct.
So, I just want to make sure that you're, we're all in communication here and you're tracking with Jack and we're going to get you to the, to the goal line here.
Well, yeah, it'd been my understanding that if we get, one of the issues that was a major concern of his was the people living on the second floor of the office building.
Right.
I'd had the understanding, apparently incorrectly, that if we got those people out of there by the 15th, that's where that date came from-
Right.
That, my memory is the expression was that he would work with us while we got the as-built plan and your final vote, so.
Right. I mean, we're like a meeting away now. I just want to make sure that he's not going to, like, close it off before we can finish our job here, because it would be a hell of a thing for us to go this far with all these meetings and it'd all be irrelevant. I'm just saying, just for a little bit of self-interest here.
No, 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 I, I, I'm completely aligned with your thinking, so.
Okay. All right, well, I suggest then that we entertain a motion to continue until our next meeting, which is the 10th of October, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have one abstention.
One abstention.
Very good. Thank you, Bill.
It's nice that we had a short meeting.
Yeah. You know it. Unless you'd like to go back to the end of the, no, I'm just kidding.
My meeting last time was longer than yours, so.
Okay.
I was still there, you guys finished. Oh, that's-
Yikes, you're kidding. Wow.
Was that the meeting about the-
Yes.
Mary, she knows how to run a meeting.
Yeah.
This is about.
It was about four hours.
I was attending the migrants.
Oh, that was that.
Loud meeting.
I was at a selectmen's meeting and it was, it was supposed to be swearing and firefighters. It was a conversation about the potential migrants moving in and it was setting the Yarmouth tax rate that I needed to be there for.
They didn't do that first?
Nope. Nope. They postponed the firefighters, which was tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
But it was over two hours of public discussion on the first.
Okay.
Are the migrants moving to the Stone Horse by any chance?
Moving on.
I would have no idea.
So, let's go to case now for our public meeting, case number PB 2023-07. Round Cove Resort Owner LLC and Fort Cove Landing Road Owner LLC are seeking site plan review pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaw, Section 325-51 and 325-55. The proposed building expansion is to create additional hotel rooms and to renovate buildings at Wequoset Resort and Golf Club, properties located 2173 Route 28, Head of the Bay Resort, map 115, parcel S1-3, and the residential high-density RH2 and commercial highway CH2 zoning districts. And this is to clarify and the motion that votes were taken on the last time and as per Attorney Rose's comments that we wanted to guarantee a supermajority, we reviewed the alternative submission and the presence of Alan and Mary at those, although Mary will not be, because she didn't attend the last one, though it's only going to be the board who will be voting on that motion. So shall we read that in as, was that, was-
Have a copy of the-
The proposed motion?
The one, the one with the larger print is from the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, right. And this is the proposed motion 2023-07. Right?
Yes. Yes, the larger one came from, so that's from.
So, if you would like, do you have any comments or would you like me to read the proposed motion and take the vote?
I have no comments. And if we could have a roll call vote, that would be great.
Okay, let's do the roll call vote. Okay.
Thank you.
So, here's the proposed motion, which clarifies and crispens up kind of the rambling, discursive structure of our ad hoc efforts without Mary last time. So this will be a little tidier effort. We definitely missed you and so, and we'll have more on that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, for the record, I just want Mary to know we tried our best.
Yeah, we did.
We did succeed, but we had-
No, I'm sure you did succeed.
Were there any comments on what you see in this language before I read it?
I have no comments about anything.
Okay, all right.
And you're, we're in a, just in a public meeting, correction, not a public hearing. Correct. Do you want me to at least read this so that, and then somebody can, can make the motion after I read it?
Perfect. Let's do that.
Save somebody.
Yeah.
Duncan, who can vote?
Everybody except for Mary.
Except for me. Thank you. And it's because it was an amended application, correct, essentially?
Yes, and also because you were not at the last meeting.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So you can, you can read it, but you-
I can, I'm just going to read it and then somebody will make the, somebody can just say so.
Okay, got it.
In the matter of PB, case number 2023-07, with applicant Round Cove Resort Owner LLC, AKA Wequoset Resort and Golf Club, in its application for a site plan review special permit for the property listed, location listed at 2173 Route 28 and Fort Cove Landing, Head of the Bay, Harwich 02645, assessors map 115, lot S1-3, map 115, lot R-2, as merged by 81X Plan recorded in Barnstable Registry of Deeds, as Plan Book 700, pages 96 and 97, in the RH-2 Harwich zoning district. As authorized under Sections 325-51 and 325-55 of the Harwich zoning bylaw, I move that based on the testimony provided at public hearings, plans and other submissions provided as part of the applicant's application and supplemental thereof, which are adopted as findings hereto, that the Harwich Planning Board vote in favor of, one, the granting of an exemption under Section 5.D.6 of the stormwater permit bylaw, based on the Conservation Commission- based on the Conservation Commission review and a finding that the proposed area to be disrupted is less than one acre, as shown in submitted plans; two, the granting of a site plan review special permit based on findings that the plans submitted are complete and well-designed, and that the plans meet the requirements of the Harwich zoning bylaw and the Planning Board rules and regulations governing subdivision of land in site plan review, and with such grant conditioned on the following. A, the applicant shall install screening of over twenty mature evergreen trees of sizes varying from eight to ten feet to fourteen to sixteen feet planted at a grade higher than the adjacent two Cove Landings dwelling, in accordance with the plans submitted by applicant. The applicant shall properly maintain all such trees and shall in a timely manner replace any trees that die or otherwise become unsightly with trees of similar size and type. And B, only four rear-facing exterior lights shall be placed on the rear second-floor decks of buildings identified as A and B on plans submitted by the applicant, and they shall all be dark sky compliant and linked to motion sensors to limit their use during evening and nighttime hours. In addition, each night, the window treatments for each occupied rear-facing room in buildings A and B shall be closed and blackout drapes shall be drawn over all rear-facing doors and windows. Lights shall be turned off in any rear-facing unoccupied room.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Bun?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Aye.
Ms. Rudy?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Barry, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much, thanks everyone for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll see you shortly on the YMCA.
Just mark me as an abstention.
Abstention, yeah. So, this brings us then to case PB twenty twenty-three dash oh-six, which is continued from August twenty-second. Eastwood Companies has submitted a request for partial release, a planning board covenant for Dorset Drive, lots one and two, with lot three to remain in covenant. The applicant has requested a continuance until the fourth, uh, twenty-fourth of October. So, may I have a motion to make this continuance?
Make a motion to continue case PB twenty twenty-three dash oh-six. Easter Companies, uh, to meeting on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, no, earlier than six thirty, yeah.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Ellen was motion.
Craig, second. Okay.
If, if, uh, if it's a partial release of covenant, has, um, have we asked the engineer to let us know if the remaining is sufficient to cover the...
Yeah, we had that a while back, and they asked for this longer extension because they're coming in on the twenty-fourth
Okay.
with a modification request for the, um, one of the drainage. So it'll all come together for that. I will re-upload the VHB report.
Okay.
And, um, give hard copies to anybody who wants.
Terrific, thank you, Sheila. That brings us to new business for this evening. I presume we have all had a moment to read the minutes. Extensive and flawless, it seems like, thank you very much. Including all the information from the meeting. Does anybody have any amendations or corrections or observations?
We approve the minutes from September twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You don't have to be here to approve them.
And, well noted. Now, there's one final item, um, that I wanted to talk about, I had a conversation with Sheila about, um, staff reports and findings and, um, training. If this is going to be more than kind of an interim situation, and, um, I wanted to make sure that we support Sheila in whatever she needs to do for training. I would like to know if it would be, um, worth your while to deliver the kind of staff reports that then can be used to springboard into the, um, findings that you've been using in the past that you're most comfortable with? We'd like to set that up if that's what you'd like.
So I think we've typically always had those findings set out, we've had findings motions set out, we've had waiver motions set out, and we've had, um, proposed and detailed conditions set out. And, you know, I, I think when, when those aren't in a staff report, we miss things. Like, I, I know at one point, I probably missed a statement that said any changes need to, any changes to the special permit need to come back to the planning board.
Right.
So we wanna make sure that we cover ourselves on all of those things.
How do you feel best about having that being done at this point?
So I, I think the best way to do it is, is for, um, Sheila to work with town council on, on preparing those findings, and, and I...
Okay.
I'm sure they're available for us to do.
Okay, is that satisfactory to you?
I sent down a number of requests, um, for assistance with that, and I haven't heard anything back. But, what, what I was gonna ask is, we had Charlene and John, and did you like either of the formatting better from one or the other? 'Cause I can go back and pull and see a format and...
So I think it's, I mean...
I think this isn't about the person, it's just...
It, it's not about the person, and it's really not about the, the choices. I mean, the Johns were more detailed, and, and I think that's what you should have.
Okay.
I liked the way John did his, um, but I also think, you know, there's... I am sure town council will be ready and willing and able to help you with those, because that's what they're, that's what they're there for, that's what they're supposed to do.
I will ask again.
Happy to support you and anything you need in that regard, Sheila. I appreciate your efforts on this.
Just 'cause this may stretch out for however many...
That's right, we don't know.
But it, but that's what, you know, it's one thing to do, you know, it's one thing to give them a draft and ask them to review it, you know? I've, I have heard that, that they're available to us, so...
That's a better way to do it maybe than to just ask for training, I'll put these together and send...
Put a draft and just, you know, it's a, it's a special permit, it's a site plan review special permit, and this is what, this is what I think, is there something that's missing? And let them review it.
So something like the, the staff memo?
Do a, do a draft, right, do a, do a draft.
Okay.
And then have them review it.
Template copy or something.
Right.
And then they can, and they can, because everything's different, right? Every fact and circumstances for everything are different, and it's making sure that our motions and our conditions are...
Clear as possible.
Right.
So we have two new cases for the tenth, and, uh, we have two new cases for the twenty-fourth.
It's a lot better than the seventh.
Right.
We don't want to deal with as many returns.
Do we have a meeting on November seventh?
Yes.
The date that will go down in infamy.
I want to have one meeting in December.
So, um, while Sheila's out, I, I wanted to also mention that I received a TM from Julie Kavanaugh, one of the members of the select board, who is our liaison now, um, and wanted to connect, um, just discuss our charge. And I think she was thinking, we're, you know, we're not a, we're not a committee, we don't have a charge, we've got regulatory oversight kind of thing, so... And she goes, "Oh, I know, I know, well, we gotta," but she wants to like have some feedback, so, um, next, I think it's next Thursday. Anybody who wishes to join, we're gonna have Cape Roots at eleven, the fifth of October.
We need to post it as a public here, public meeting if you're gonna have a quorum.
Okay, all right, I'm just...
Otherwise, it can just be you and Julie.
It was just gonna be me and Julie, and I was just gonna, she, I, open the conversation. I suggested if she wants anything more, then she'll appear before us, and we'll have a kind of a forum in a pu- public meeting with the agenda. But I just wanted to let you know, if you want something for me to say to her, to address to her, you know, feedback loop, just, just let me know and I'll take care of that, so...
No, we don't have a seventh, we have the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Perfect.
Uh, Thanksgiving is early this year, so it'll be the Tuesday after Thanksgiving is the twenty-eighth.
Perfect.
We have only one meeting in December, which is the twelfth, and I'm putting together, it's pretty much done, the, um, schedule for next year, so I'll have those at the next meeting, so we can all...
Terrific.
Just a point of clarification.
Yep.
Your meeting with Julie, um, were you saying that we could attend as well if we wanted?
No, I'm just saying, if you want, if you want input, yeah, if you want me to give her input, if you're saying, because I think this has become kind of, um, this, the discussion with regard to the golf committee has become kind of polarized, and I think they're trying to get out ahead of it. If there are any issues that you see here, let, let me know, that I'm, you know, if we haven't discussed it here, you know? So, not that I'm expecting anything, I'm just offering that as a, as a, to be a channel, so, for the conversation. Yep.
We need a town planner.
Yeah, well, right, yeah, we've, we're definitely talking about that.
We also talked about...
I don't think it's for lack of effort.
Right.
The long-term plan, people are not connected to us, and...
Right. Excellent point, yeah. Yeah, 'cause we were going to have a routine feedback loop, and that never really has materialized.
So we're, and then there's a group that's kind of organizing to change bylaws and stuff as well, from the, that came here to one of our meetings, so it's...
Oh, right. Yeah, well, that's, that's kind of, I think we need to just, you know...
Yeah.
We're aware of it, but I think that's a work in progress, and I don't know what's gonna happen with that.
We play a role in that whole process, so...
Agree.
You know, so...
I did send out an email about open meeting law training, that's the first one.
Oh, that's the other thing, yes, thank you, yeah. Yeah, uh, open meeting law, there are two, two-hour, um, meetings next week, or...
This week.
This week, and if you're not up to speed on them, right, yeah, Thursday.
They're in person, right?
Right, and I think there are at the community center, yeah. Like, two to four and six to eight.
Five to seven.
Five to seven, right, okay.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
Open meeting, training, do we, if there is a quorum, do we have to know?
If you're not delivering anything, you don't have anything in front of you.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other new business or old business before the board?
Anybody wanna sing hallelujah?
It's forty-two minutes and eleven seconds, or whatever it is.
Don't knock on wood, and don't you jinx us for the next meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gloria and Ex Chelsea stay out.